Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Board of Education for the City of Waterbury for February 18th, 2021 via Zoom and other virtual channels. Our first agenda for tonight is a silent prayer. Commissioner Ann Sweeney, I mean, I'm sorry, Superintendent Ruffin, do you have any comments that you want to bring to bear on the silent prayer?
Yes, Commissioner. Tonight, in our moment of silence, let us remember former members of the Waterbury Public Schools Education Community who have passed away. Tavon Mosher, seventeen-year-old student at Kennedy High School, passed away on January 22nd. Nalee Roy Kleinschmidt, retired math teacher at Crosby and Willoughby High School, passed away on January 23rd. Let us remember and recognize the service, dedication, and passion both to the students of Waterbury and to those they cared for this evening.
Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Rocco Orso, would you like to do the Pledge of Allegiance for us tonight?
Very sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, unity, and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Rocco Orso. Carrie Swain, would you like to do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez? Commissioner Nardozzi?
Here.
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno? Commissioner Stango?
He's here. He's muted.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Van Stone?
Present.
President Pagano?
Here.
All right.
The next agenda item is Communications Commissioner Ann Sweeney, would you do your magic, please?
Motion to receive and place on file communications as listed.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any comments, discussions? I don't see anybody's hand waving, so I will take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Ayes have it. Thank you. The motion carries. The, uh, the next agenda item is the public address to the board. Again, Commissioner Sweeney, can you do your magic for me?
Motion to suspend the regular order of business to hear from the public.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion or comments before we go forward? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Against? Thank you. We will now go into public speaking. Carrie, you know who the first caller is?
We have one public speaker. Sherey Billingsley, please state your name and address for the record.
Sherey Billingsley, 488 Perkins Avenue.
You can go ahead.
Hi, um, I just want to know what are, what is the process? Are they going to try to open up schools full-time? I mean, you can have a vaccination clinic at Williams School seven days a week, but you can't open up schools for the children to get an education? I'm a taxpaying citizen. This is like, it's, it's kind of a slap in the face. Every other surrounding town has schools open full-time for students, and we're the only town that's still going on a hybrid model. It's getting to be a bit much.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Someone will be back to you with an answer at some point, not tonight, though. Thank you. Um, any other speakers? Good. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ann Sweeney, can you do your abracadabra in reverse?
Motion to return to the regular order of business.
Any discussion, comments?
Hello?
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We are now back in regular session. Uh, item number six is the superintendent's announcements. Dr. Ruffin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I have several things to discuss with the board tonight, and I start with a, a presentation. We celebrate this month, Black History Month, and it is always at this time of the year that we take extra special steps to recognize Black Americans who have contributed to the work, not only in education, but also in the broad spectrum of services as well as businesses throughout America. It is very important that we also recognize some of Waterbury's own citizens and the impact that they've had, either on children or on the community, uh, in, in influence the community here in Waterbury. So it gives me great honor to be able to recognize one of the former educators here in Waterbury Public Schools, uh, who had her beginnings as a teacher here in Waterbury. There are several people who will be presenting also and, and, and sharing recognition and words of, of wisdom about the contributions of Ms. Laura Ward-Gallington. But at this time, I would like to share just a short bio before I introduce some of guest speakers who will be here this evening. Laura Ward-Gallington was born and raised in Waterbury, Connecticut. She attended Croft and Walsh Elementary Schools. She was a graduate of the 1945 class of Willoughby High School. In 1950, Ms. Gallington graduated from Teachers College of Connecticut. This is presently Connecticut, um, Central Connecticut State University. She graduated there with a bachelor's degree in elementary education and began her career in September of that same year. When she began her teaching career, she was one of the first teachers of African-American descent in the city of Waterbury. Ms. Gallington taught as a full-time teacher at Walsh in Fisher Elementary Schools until the mid-sixties. However, for many years after she stopped her formal teaching, she continued her teaching by tutoring countless students and children and adults. Throughout her life, Ms. Gallington influenced countless students, teachers, and citizens. From early on, she was an active member in the community. She was heavily involved in the civil rights movement, both individually and as a member of the NAACP. She was involved in the Girl Scouts of America, hosting meetings in her home. Nothing was more important to her than helping others in any way that she could. Because of this attitude and self-sacrifice in spirit, she's had a great impact on numerous people of all races, ethnic backgrounds, and especially women of color. Throughout her life and to this day, she has displayed an insatiable desire for education. She always tried to encourage others to put forth every effort to pursue education. As a teacher, she tried to instill their desire for knowledge and learning, and she tried to instill that in all of her students. Even now, at the age of ninety-three, her eyes still light up at very mention of education or any form of mentoring. She continues to identify herself as a teacher, and this is what she will always be. For the past six years, Ms. Gallington has presided in Maryland, but Waterbury has never left her heart. And we want to thank her son for the contributions of sharing the bio, and we also would like to recognize one of her very special students, uh, who will also, uh, share a few words. So it is my pleasure tonight to welcome the Honorable Judge Maurice Mosley, who will speak about his former teacher. Judge Mosley, are you here?
Yes, good evening. Good evening to distinguished board members, and a special good evening to the distinguished clerk of the board, Carrie Swain, and to the IT guru, Will Zuda. It's my pleasure to be here, and I noticed there's a, a few Red Sox fans on the board, and as a Dodger fan, I want to thank you very much for Mookie Betts, okay?
You're quite welcome.
I really appreciate it, okay?
You're quite welcome.
Right, thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. There's a little nostalgia with me being here tonight because, uh, for ten years, I was a lawyer for the board, and I enjoyed it very, very much. I want to commend the board, uh, for being so on top of the pandemic. It's been a very, very tough goal for you all, and also it's been a very tough goal for the students. A special commendation to Dr. Ruffin. She's been doing an exemplary job, and I want to thank her again for kicking off the second semester of the Granville Academy Program. We have gotten a robust enrollment from the, uh, students, and the pilot program reveals some questions which we resolved, and now we're in the second semester of the Virtual Academy. We had to reimagine the program because of virus. Everything is virtual. And we have a good number of students. We adopted, uh, four schools, Reed, um, Carrier, um, and Wallace and Crosby, and the program is going very well. Some of the courses, so you'll know, uh, we are doing, uh, social and emotional learning, and that's very, very important, as you know, because of the pandemic. Coding, uh, writing skills. Joyce Peddaway, a former member of your board, is doing, uh, public speaking skills. And it's so, so important because being out of school for almost a year, uh, there's going to be some, some scarring with, with the students. And in order to catch up, they have to, um, go back to school. If they're doing it virtual, we're rolling those modules, and then they need enrichment programs to catch up. Otherwise, it's going to be very, very tough, and we are offering our, our program to them. Now, the main reason why I'm here is because of Laura Ward-Gallington. Just a little history, I was born in the, in the forties, and my mother told me a story. She was a, a college grad. She indicated when she first went down to the board, um, you know, a clerk told her they didn't need teachers that bad yet. And it really made me extremely bitter when she told me that. And when I was in second grade, I walked into my classroom the first day, and I was just blown away by seeing a very attractive, young, beautiful, gifted teacher by the name of Laura Ward. She was, uh, exciting, caring, and she did a terrific job, and I, she set me on my path to what I'm doing now. She was so sensitive and caring, and I also remember, um, one of the good things about teachers in those days, they lived in the community. I lived on a street called Bishop Street, and I went to Bishop School. I remember the classroom where she taught me. Uh, you go up Bishop Street, and you take a right where Monroe Webster lives. That's Crown Street, and the first classroom on the right was our second grade classroom, and she did an excellent, excellent job. Her generation really opened the doors and set the foundation for my generation. I would not be where I am today if it were not for people like her that opened the doors. We are standing on their shoulders, and I'm so glad that you decided to, um, acknowledge her this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge Mosley. And we have Monroe Webster, who's here on behalf of Mayor O'Leary, uh, with a proclamation from the City of Waterbury. So, um, Mr. Webster, I saw you here earlier.
Yes, thank, thank you, Dr. Ruffin. It really is a privilege, uh, to be amongst, uh, the commissioners today. Uh, I'm excited to be able to represent the mayor. I'm excited about, uh, what, uh, the, Ms. Gallington has done down through the years to represent and encourage the citizens of Waterbury and, and even those beyond. One of the things, uh, you know, as I was looking at her, at her, uh, bio, one of the things that, uh, my pastor, uh, my late pastor used to say was that you had to be committed, obligated, and dedicated. And as I look through, uh, Ms. Gallington's, uh, bio, that comes out very strong. I mean, we talk about her influencing students, but not only did she influence students, she was an influencer of teachers. She was an influencer of her peers, and, uh, I'm just excited for what, uh, she has done, and according to the family, she continues to do in terms of, uh, her desire to, uh, impress upon our young people and, and everyone the importance of education. The mayor does, and that's one of the things, and speaking about the mayor, the mayor impresses upon people all the time the importance of education. He, uh, is dedicated to making sure that our students get the best education that, uh, is available to them. And so he's excited about being able to present a proclamation, uh, to the Gallington family at a future time. I am not going to read the proclamation at this time. A lot of the information, uh, that proclamation will make up, uh, is, uh, includes that which Dr. Ruffin, Dr. Ruffin mentioned in her bio. Uh, but I'm just excited and thankful that you allowed me this time to be able to give accolades, uh, to, uh, Laura Gallington as well as to the Gallington family, and again, thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you very much. Uh, it's also an honor to have members of Ms. Gallington's family. I understand her son Larry is here, uh, and I also understand that at this time, Commissioners and, and Vice President Harvey, if there are any comments that you would like to make or to direct to the family or to allow the family to speak, um, before turning it over to Commissioner Pagano, this would be, um, this would be the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Um, I will just make some brief comments, and then I would like to have the family, uh, Larry, uh, her son, I think he's going to speak to the family, uh, to, to address this, address us. But I, I would just like to say, uh, thank you to, uh, Laura Ward-Gallington, uh, for being one of the, uh, first, um, African-American teachers here, um, in our district. I would also like to take, uh, this time to thank the family, um, prior to, uh, Larry, uh, speaking. This, this all came about, uh, frankly, from a, uh, a post, uh, that, that Larry had, um, on Facebook, wishing his mother, um, a happy birthday. And, uh, it was then that it was revealed that she, um, was one of the first African-American, uh, teachers here in the city of Waterbury, that she taught at Bishop, um, Elementary School, um, and that, and also at Walsh School. Now, uh, I, that struck a nerve because I attended kindergarten at Bishop Elementary School. So, so, so that just kind of touched my heart. But it, it's not often that we get the opportunity, you know, to really thank, um, our educators. Every, every meeting, you know, we memorialize our, our educators and mention them and thank them. Uh, but it's not often that we get a chance to thank them, and they're still alive. So, um, I, I just want to, um, again, thank the family, um, for all your cooperation. We tried to get everybody on. You know, I know a few are just, are, are listening, but I just want to thank the family, um, for their cooperation, and, uh, particularly thank Larry, thank, uh, Costilio for, um, you know, talking to me and getting, helping to organize this. And, uh, the most important person of all is thanking Laura Ward-Gallington. So, um, um, just quickly, I also want to thank the Honorable Judge Maurice Mosley, Monroe Webster, and everyone else, and you, Dr. Ruffin, for, um, helping to organize this. So with that, um, I will turn it back to you, Dr. Ruffin, and if, if we can allow Larry to have a few words for the family. That would be great. Thank you.
Yes, um, Mr. Gallington, are you on the line?
Yes, I am on. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good, good, good. I'm going to, uh, quickly turn this over to my sister, Castella. She's in, uh, Maryland right now, uh, sitting with my mom. Hi, Mom. And, uh, I just, I'm really, I'm really overwhelmed, um, just with all the generous, uh, statements. And, uh, my mom is a very humble person, um, and she appreciates everything. This is really, uh, a day that, you know, a night that we're all going to, uh, remember. And, uh, I just want to say thanks, uh, to everyone. And, uh, hello, uh, Judge Mosley, uh, nice to see you again. And, uh, just one little, um, one little tidbit here, um, uh, my mom was, uh, Judge Mosley's, uh, second grade teacher, and I don't know if you recall, uh, Judge, uh, Mr. Mosley, but, uh, in fourth grade, when I was in fourth grade, you were actually scheduled to be my fourth grade teacher. But that was the year that, uh, we had busing, and I was, uh, shipped off, uh, to Mary Abbott, uh, School. So it's just, uh, the circle of life, you know? Uh, it's a beautiful thing, and I just appreciate everything. If my sister Castella could now, uh, to say a few words, uh, uh, from the family. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Castella Murphy, and, um, on behalf of my mother, again, my name is Castella Murphy, and on behalf of my mother Laura Gallington and our entire family, we would like to express our sincere thanks, uh, to Ms. Karen Harvey, Judge Maurice Mosley, uh, the Board of Education, all of you, and the mayor's office. It just truly has been a privilege on our part to have you all recognize my mother and her teaching and the work that she's done throughout the years in, in Waterbury. And, um, we're just very honored that, that you have, uh, done this for us.
Yes, we appreciate everybody, the way you have tried so hard, and you continue to try.
Yes, thank you very much. So my mother has certainly been a positive influence in the lives of many, as has been stated. And there, there's a person who once stated that teachers who love teaching teach their children to love learning. And that certainly is an apt, uh, description of our, of our mother. She loves teaching. She cares for everyone, and in reality, she's never stopped teaching. And, um, she never passes up an opportunity to teach both children and adults valuable lessons of life. And we're grateful that she's made, that she made the choice to extend herself in so many ways, uh, in order to help others. And so, um, again, we would like to thank you all for, for this special occasion, and everyone who made it possible for this to happen. We really appreciate it. And even though my mother physically right now is miles away from Waterbury, her heart is firmly attached there, and that's no doubt. Thank you so much. We certainly appreciate all that you've done for us. Thank you.
Bravo. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and it's an honor to meet you. Thank you for your influence on students and the influence you still have on education today. Appreciate that. It's a pleasure.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, the thanks all around from everybody, because that is the purpose, to forget no one but to love each and everyone.
Yeah.
So that the children can grow up to be like the others were, and the seeds needed, that they, that they are copying a lot of good things.
Yes. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This part of the presentation, um, will conclude, um, but I will continue with the remainder of the superintendent's, uh, announcements today. So it's a pleasure having all of you here, and, um, and I will continue with some other notes that I have to share with the board. I would like to share the, um, last month's visit from Governor Lamont as he visited the COVID-19 Vaccine Clinic at Waterbury Arts Magnet School. Along with Governor Lamont, he was joined by Mayor O'Leary and Dr. Stephen Schneider of St. Mary's Hospital. Uh, I was also there for a tour of the COVID-19, uh, site. We were delighted to be a part of this joint partnership to serve our residents in Waterbury, and very pleased that this has accelerated the rate, uh, at which we can distribute vaccines. Actor visits Walsh Elementary School. Walsh was delighted to welcome actress Margot Bingham for a virtual reading session as part of the Black History Month program. Bingham joined Ms. Schwartz's fourth, fourth grade class, where she read Seventeen Eighty-Nine. Twelve authors explore a year of rebellion, revolution, and change by Mark Arison and Susan Campbell Martoli, Martaletti. And we appreciate her taking the time to read to our students. Waterbury Arts Magnet seniors Bianca Moreno and Alia Willett were both honored with scholarships to the university of their choice. Bianca was awarded the Presidential Scholarship for Fashion Merchandising and Retailing at Johnson &amp; Wales University, and Alia was awarded the Presidential Scholarship for Studio Art at the University of Hartford. And congratulations, seniors. We're very proud of you. The College Planner and Mental Health Webinar. I'm really excited about this, which, uh, it's, it's going to be happening on February 25th. Uh, we are proud to have two of our, our former graduates from Kennedy High School, Christian Million and Carolina Misario. They can, continue to contribute to our community here in Waterbury, and they've created a college planner and mental health guide for our students. They're going to be speaking to that at a webinar later this month. They will be providing students with helpful college tips and self-care guidance. It will be a virtual meeting taking place on Thursday, February 25th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And we are extremely proud of these students and are looking forward to this interactive event. We hope that all of you can join us. The Leukemia and Lymphoma Society's Hero Squad Program. Waterbury Public Schools continues to participate. We're very pleased that we have, um, uh, schools participating and students and staff from Hopefield, Generali, Rotella, Sprague, and Waterbury Arts Magnet. The, uh, Leukemia and Lymphoma Society's Hero Program is responsible for providing patients and families with support. And we're very honored that our schools continue to support this great, uh, cause. Gives me great pleasure this evening. I, I know you, you, you have, uh, approved, um, the, uh, the appointment of Matt Brown in previous meeting, and, uh, but he was not present on that particular, uh, night. He was still working in his, in his other district. But we now have been joined by our chief turnaround officer, Mr. Matt Brown. He is on the meeting tonight, and I've asked him if he has a few words to say, or if he would like to introduce his family to the board. This would be an acceptable time to do that. So Matt, uh, I don't see you because I, really, I can only see one person at this point, but if you're here, it would, uh, please, uh, say a few words, and if you'd like to introduce your family, please do so.
I, I am here, Dr. Ruffin. Thank you, and I just want to start by saying, uh, my deep appreciation to you, Dr. Ruffin, uh, to the Board of Education members and the City of Waterbury for giving me this opportunity to join this team. It's actually incredibly moving to be on a call with somebody like, uh, Ms. Laura Gallington, and, and I, I feel like part of the role of, of the team here in Waterbury is to find the Laura Gallingtons who are out in our schools right now. I know there's some great teachers and principals that I've already met who are doing amazing work here in Waterbury, and I'm just really pleased to be joining and really pleased to, to, to be a part of it. I've had an opportunity to work in, uh, the last twenty-five years in a variety of different settings, involved in school reform and education innovation. I think Waterbury is doing some terrific things, and it's really a great time to, to be here and try to help move that forward. So I, I would like to introduce my family. Um, let me see. I thought they were here. Yeah, come on in. Yeah, sorry. Just to say hello, this is, uh, my daughter Bella, who's a eighth grader. My youngest son Eli, who's a seventh grader, and my oldest son Noah, who's a tenth grader, and my wife Rachel here in New Haven.
Good evening.
So we're just trying to, to, to join the team and, and, and get things going. So thank you so much for a warm welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yay, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And our next introduction, he's not new to us. And again, two different processes of hiring people. Matt came through the process of the Waterbury Public Schools process. Juan has come through the process of the civil service process. So we have a new assistant superintendent. Juan Mendoza has joined us several months ago as the interim director of the Human Capital Department as the principal of Reed, transferred as an interim director, has done an amazing job in the Human Capital Department and has now become an assistant superintendent. And his majority of the work is all in Human Capital Department and really shaping that up. And you heard the presentation that he made at our last work session. But I would like to welcome Juan now officially as the assistant superintendent. Ask him if he has a few words to share and also to introduce his family if you would like. Juan?
Good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners and Superintendent Dr. Ruffin. As many of you know, I'm a product of the Waterbury Public Schools. I attended East Farms, now it's Generali. I went to Wallace Middle School and then I graduated from Crosby High School. Go Bulldogs! And then I taught at Walsh. And later on, I was given the opportunity to lead Jonathan Reed and open the school as its first principal. I'm very excited and grateful about this opportunity. It's a district that's given me so much and I'm glad to give back. Again, thank you for this opportunity and I'm very lucky to be back in Waterbury. Unfortunately, my wife's getting my kids ready for bed and giving my son a bath, so she wasn't able to be on the call tonight. Thank you again.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Juan. I've shared with our commissioners and with some of our administrators during the superintendent's forum that Waterbury is going to be taking a proactive role and a proactive procedure and strategy in engaging the community as we reimagine education. We're forming a think tank. And prior to actually asking people if they're interested, I know I've gotten an overwhelming number of interests from our school administrators and some of our central office staff. But I'm opening this up to all of our community. Our parents, our teachers, all of our support staff, all of our unions and community stakeholders and partners or even potential partners to really learn more about what imagining, reimagining education is going to mean for Waterbury. There will be two informational sessions that will be conducted virtually Wednesday, March 3rd. We're going to have a morning session from 9:30 to 10:15 and we're going to have an evening session from 6:00 to 6:45. This is an informational session. It will share more information about the SRT2 funds that we've received that are to be used for four very specific categories to improve our district and to really recover from COVID-19 and the huge amount of time that we have been in a hybrid model and many instances for several weeks, even months in a virtual model to help us to be able to support our students in their learning and acceleration of learning as well as social and emotional, as well as the technological enhancements that we need to continue to grow and develop in our district. And also to include partnerships that we would have that we currently have that we want to expand or new ones that we need to help our students. So I'd like to engage the community so that they could be a part of what reimagining education will mean for Waterbury. Because I do believe we have lessons learned as a result of COVID and we have practices that we have learned that we could not have imagined in March of 2020 that we would have learned today. So I think we have an opportunity to put our heads together, to stretch our thinking so that we can go beyond the traditional and really learn how to engage our students in a meaningful way. So this is open to students as well as adults and to all of the community. I ask the board members and everyone listening to please make note of this meeting, to attend so you could learn more about it. Following that meeting, there will be a forum for those who choose to take part as a committee member. And I'm very certain that there are going to be too many people to form four distinct committees. So there's going to be a format for continuous input and feedback so we can have a working committee which will be meeting more often. And we can engage others in a meaningful way to capture their thoughts as we bring forth ideas that we would want to implement in the future. This is not a short-term committee. It's not a short-term endeavor. And while the SRT2 funds are to be used in 2021, 21, 22, and 23, it is still money that we want to spend wisely because I envision this impacting our district for the next five to 10 years. So it's not a quick, let's spend the money. It's really intentional to have expected outcome for our youth in Waterbury. So I invite you to attend that meeting. Additionally, I will be conducting meetings beginning on February 23rd to begin a larger dialogue and information session on the international school slash dual language. Envision in Waterbury, you know, two years ago when we started working and I started having community forums, many times parents would ask about dual language. I had an opportunity about a month ago to participate in the biliteracy seal dialogue that was happening for our students who are interested in a biliteracy seal, which means that the students could earn this seal as a result of them being fluent and proficient in not only speaking but also writing and communicating in two or more languages. The excitement on the students' faces as they described how long they have earned for this and the possibilities and the marketing and the position that this places students in to not only work in limited jobs but to have a choice in where they want to work and also be their owners of how they are going to be successful and where they want to live and work and enjoy life. And that biliteracy seal, of course, opens the doors for students who have a leg up, so to speak, when they apply for college scholarships as well as when they go out for employment. And we want to be able to do that in a meaningful way. We believe that our students, beginning in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten and first grade, could begin as our first cohort of students, learning English and Spanish simultaneously. So we envision this program beginning in next year in the fall. And I would like to engage in the community to find out what the interest is for parents to send their schools, their students to this dual-language school. And we're calling it an international school because we envision not only the strong focus on learning two languages simultaneously but also the different cultures and the impact on being bilateral, what that means for children and for families. So we envision this school starting with English and Spanish in year one and continuing so that our students will go through elementary and middle school and will have great opportunities by the time that they're in high school. So informational session starts on February 23rd. I would envision that by March, we will not only have just that background information but we will be able to be more definitive as to where this is going to be located. At this time, it appears that we have tried very hard to remain in school in our hybrid model and the inclement weather has caused us to go virtual several times since the beginning of February. We are still working very hard collectively, the assistant superintendents and several other members of the senior cabinet with the principals and with teachers and with our unions to describe what going back to school a full day is going to look like for some time in March. So we continue to work on that. We should have something within the next two or three weeks to be able to present to the board so that you will see what that will look like in terms of extending the day to a full day of instructional time for students as we move forward. We still have a large number of students that continue to learn virtually. We have less than 30% of our students who are in person. We hope that by March, we will see an increase in the number of students who will be in person. But regardless, we are looking at having a full day of instruction in person and we'll continue the virtual and we'll continue that model until such time as we're ready to evolve and provide more of the in-person learning. And we seek guidance always from the Health Department as well as from the Crisis Management Team. We are in weekly, sometimes more often than just once a week, meetings with the State Department, with the CDC. And so we utilize all of the data that we have from outside agencies as well as agencies that are professional into the Center for Disease Control as well as state data to be able to help guide the decisions that we make. I know that we have many districts in the state of Connecticut that are still in hybrid. We know that some have had struggles opening. We look at what we need to do here in Waterbury based on our Waterbury information and data and we make the very best decision that we can for the children that we serve and the staff that we are very appreciative of as we join in this work, which is very complex work together. I appreciate everyone who is joining hands with us and helping us to navigate through a very challenging pandemic. And we are deeply appreciative of everyone who works tirelessly to make certain that our children and our teachers and our staff are safe. We anticipate now that we have the next phase of 1B with 65-year-olds and older receiving a vaccine. And we wait in anticipation as we can continue to extend the vaccine to other groups. We have communicated with other departments. We have, we're sending something out to all of our staff so that they will know where they may fall within that cycle. Right now, we are still at the 65-year-old and older. And when, but we want to be very clear in how we're going to be distributing other vaccines as we receive the authorization to do so. The mayor has had many meetings and we're very pleased that the governor as well as Senator Blumenthal have been here and explaining and seeing what Waterbury has so that they know that Waterbury is poised to administer more vaccines when more vaccines become available. So keep in mind, you know, sometimes people think that, you know, we're not giving the vaccines, but all of the counties and all of the municipalities are given a certain amount of vaccines. And when those vaccines are distributed, there is no more at that time. And so whenever we get more, Waterbury is poised to be able to distribute 24/7, if needed, vaccines and complimentary, encouraging place to be, to know that we're not going to be held back because of lack of capacity. We have the capacity. Now we need the vaccines. And when we do, we're communicating that on both the city side as well as the Waterbury Public School side. That concludes my superintendent's notes and comments for this evening. I'll answer any questions that you might have. But I do want to thank all of the commissioners and everyone and all the members of my staff for your continued support and your staying the course during this very turbulent time.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Any questions or comments, please? I don't see anybody's hand going up. So I will move on to the next. And thank you again, Dr. Ruffin. And my comments are going to be short and sweet. As I'm in that special, unique group of 65 and older, I did visit WAMs today and I got my shot of a vaccine. It was the most, it was a nice visit for doing what it had to do. It was quick, it was efficient, it was comfortable and in and out in a relatively short amount of time. My other second comment is going to be, "Love an engineer is my motto." If you see that Commissioner Tom Van Stone and I, from our backgrounds, suffer from a similar affliction, it's called, "We're geeks and we follow NASA stuff." I was glued to my TV set today all day watching Perseverance landing on Mars because I still remember when the Apollo astronauts landed on the moon. And I remember when John Kennedy made the goal for us, talking about going to the moon. So I will look at Star Trek, but you give me a landing on Mars or somewhere else along with Commissioner Tom Van Stone, we were probably glued together watching the same stuff. So my only message is, "Love a geek, give a hug to an engineer." And I'm one of them. I take hugs from everyone. So thank you. We have, I believe we have two student representatives here tonight. I know Edson Destra is here because I see him on the camera. And is Zaira Reynolds here tonight also? I don't see Zaira, but Edson, you have any comments you want to pass on to the group? The floor is yours.
As to now, no, but in future, in future things that are under, in the program, sure, I have a couple of comments to make.
I didn't quite hear you. You were cutting in and out.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I said, "As to now, no," but there are things that are under agenda that I'd like to comment that we've not gotten to yet. So, thank you.
Okay, well, when we get to it, you can chime in. Our next, is Zaira on the phone? I don't believe she is. I don't see her anywhere there. Our next agenda item is item number nine, Consent Calendar. Does anyone have a desire to remove an item from the consent calendar tonight? I don't see anybody shaking their hand, so I'm going to read the consent calendar. Item 9.1, A Request of Approval of Amendment Number One to the Memorandum of Understanding, or as affectionately called by the legal world, the MOU, with the State Education Resource Center, SERC, for Professional Learning to Support, Promote, and Develop Racial Equity in Education. Item 9.2, It's a Request for Approval of Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Agreement with Cormier Consulting LLC for Teacher and Administrator Professional Development. Item 9.3, Which is a Request for Approval of Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Agreement with Teaching Strategies LLC to Provide Preschool Curriculum, Assessment Material, and Professional Learning Services. And finally, Item 9.4, Use of School Facilities by Outside Organizations and/or Waivers and Requests. I need a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Thank you, motion.
Motion.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion or comments? Seeing none? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained? The motion carries. The consent calendar is now history. The next item, we don't have item number 10, so we're going to item number 11, Committee on Finance, Commissioner Rocco Orso. The floor is yours.
Committee on Finance, Request Approval to Transmit the Proposed 2020-21 Department of Education's Budget Request to the Mayor.
Second.
May I, any discussion or comments before Commissioner Tom Van Stone? The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Yes, we met as the Finance Committee a couple of weeks back, had a very good presentation. We all complimented Doreen and her staff as well as Will for putting together something that's very difficult, same amount of money for many years now. I still have a few areas that I'll be following up with as it matures. Of course, tonight is really just a vote, you know, to send it across the street for its first pass. But some of the things I'll be looking at down the line is somebody, there's a couple of new jobs on there for the legal office I'm looking at. I did see some funding we're going to set aside for the additional teachers we need at Wendell Cross. Looking back on some of the history of when we've gone, you know, to the K-8 model and some other schools. And I know salaries have gone up, but it still looks a little high to me. So I'll be keeping a good look on that as we go forward. And also, we're putting aside money to prepare for the salaries over at what will become, whatever it's going to be, St. Peter and Paul. So those are a couple of things as this matures and I get a little more information. I'll probably come on board for passing this, but at least for tonight, I will not be passing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Anyone else have a comment or a question? All right. We have a motion. Do I need a second? Do we take a vote?
We have a second.
You have a second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One opposed, Commissioner Tom Van Stone, the rest were ayes. Carrie, thank you, everyone. The motion passes for a transmittal across the street as it delineated. We are now on item number 12, the superintendent's notification of the board. Commissioner Sweeney, could you do the honors, please?
Motion to receive and place on file, superintendent's notification to the board, item 12.1. 12.10. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much. The motion carries. We are now moving on to item 13, unfinished business of preceding meeting only. Anybody have anything? Not all at once, okey dokey. We move on to item number 14, other unfinished, new and miscellaneous business. I don't think there's anybody got anything?
Uh, I do.
Uh, hold on, Commissioner Anne Sweeney, are you waving your hand?
I am. I just, I know that our student rep had mentioned that he might want to address a few things and maybe they went by without that opportunity for him. So could you please just check with him to see if he has some comments?
Edson, do you, did you have any comments you wanted to talk about?
Yes, I, let be, I've seen a letter going around. It was about something that was decided by the board concerning police officers in school buildings. Some people in the community were sort of against police officers being in school buildings. And I'd like to address this and saying that, me personally, I think police officers in school buildings are vital for the security and for safety of the students, especially in any time that there are school shootings that are often in the United States. And I think having a police officer there makes me personally feel safer and, and police officers, resource officers in school buildings do a great job and helping, and helping the safety of the students. And, and being there, being there, their presence only serves as a reassurance of the safety of the students. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Edson. Anyone else have their hand up that I didn't see? Commissioner Sweeney, I mean, Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, thank you, President Bignano. I did want to address that issue, not address it, but just mention, and I think our student, I didn't catch his name again.
Edson.
Edson, Edson, I'm very sorry for that. But that the issue of SROs is still something that the board wants to address. I have a proposal that I will present for us to address that issue because I hear things from the community. And, you know, I'm interested in what it is that you said you saw a letter going around about SROs. I'm interested in seeing that. But I think the issue of the MOU still needs to be addressed. And I will probably recommend a task force to look at that. But to give that, that issue, very important issue, a chance to be addressed by the board and, you know, invite student input as well as the community. Next, I would like to again thank the Honorable Judge Maurice Mosley for his presentation and Maureen Webster for joining in to help us to celebrate Laura Ward Garlandon. And, you know, I just can't say enough about that. Also, I'm just going to put out there that the issue of the learning pods, I'm hearing things in the community regarding that, the question of whether or not, you know, the, you know, how the funds will be used. I think it's the S R funds and if those funds can be applied to, you know, learning pods in the community. So I hope, I know Dr. Ruffin mentioned that March 3rd, there would be an engagement with the community. So I'm looking to see, you know, what exactly is, you know, will come about that and that we can hopefully address that issue as to whether or not learning pods, these funds can be used towards that. So with that, that's all I have, President Bignano. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments or Commissioner Rocco Orso, I see your hand up?
I guess this is new business or whatever, but I just want to publicly congratulate Mr. Will Clark for being appointed for the Superior Court Judge. Congratulations as well, you'll be a big loss.
Yes, big time. Congrats.
Thank you, Rocco. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Just nominated at this point, though, not appointed yet. Committee to clear.
No doubt, no doubt.
You can join my mother praying if you like.
You're squeaky clean. You'll get in, don't worry. Will, do you want to say anything to the group?
Sure, thank you, President Bignano. Just briefly, I want to thank you, particularly President Bignano, the very humbling comments that you made in the press, really appreciate that. Dr. Ruffin and the mayor as well. You know, I, I really feel this is a great board and having worked and represented a number of boards across the state, you know, the, and I've worked for different kinds, appointed, elected, hybrid. So having an elected board that works with such continuity and collaboration and laser focus on the kids is really inspiring and important and something I think other boards can really learn from. You can disagree without being disagreeable and do so respectfully. And, and that's something that we can all take a page out of and put back into our own lives. So thank you for that, reinforcing that lesson and for all you all do for the students and staff of Waterbury. So Dr. Ruffin and my colleagues, it's been a great run here. I think we've really done some great stuff and set in motion a lot of great foundational elements. And today I was at a Capitol Projects meeting with Doreen and Will and Raj and came back and we thought we had a nice capital budget presentation of all the things we need and came back to my head spinning with about 30 more things and Dr. Ruffin added to the agenda. So it's never a dull moment when you're trying to change the world. So, you know, I appreciate that momentum and somebody who really likes to put the shoulder against the rock every day and push uphill, appreciate a steep one to add to the challenge. But I really appreciate all the leadership and guidance Dr. Ruffin had. We met a couple of years ago. I can tell it would be a great collaboration and someone who's great to work for and with. And I'm sure that friendship will, will continue and I'll do everything I can to support Waterbury as I move to the, hopefully to the next, next step here. And my colleagues, you know, particularly on the facilities and operations side, Will and Doreen and Raj and everybody that I've worked with, it's really been terrific. And again, I think we've really done some great things and in some cases made some lemonade out of lemons and, you know, showed hopefully our staff and the folks around us how you can, you know, you can sometimes see an obstacle or a wall and give up. Sometimes you find a way around it, sometimes you find a way to climb over it, dig under it, and sometimes it's got to break through it. And I think we've put together a team that knows how to do all the different ways now, which is terrific. And so my fellow cabinet members, I mean, you know, the challenge is great and that's why this work is great. You know, you get to come to work every day and it's a little bit different, but you can put your head on the pillow at night and know you helped kids.
Well, thank you very much for your service and you've, you're going to be hard to replace. So congratulations.
That's not the end you see of us, so we're going to, we're going to celebrate you a whole lot.
Oh, yeah. Any other business before we move on to the, to the executive session? I see no one waving their hands. So Commissioner Sweeney, can you do your abracadabra one more time?
Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second, please?
Second.
Discussion, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The ayes have it, the motion carries. We are going into executive session. Thank you. Commissioner Anne Sweeney, would you bring us out of executive session, please?
Motion to return from executive session to the regular order of business. No votes were taken.
May I have a second? Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, have a sparkling and refraining.
Motion adjourned.
Uh, motion adjourned, I'm sorry, I was on automatic control.
Make a motion adjourned.
Anybody want to talk?
We need to vote out the motion.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No? Abstained? Ladies and gentlemen, the motion carries. We are adjourned. Have a sparkling weekend.
Good night, everybody.
Have a good night. Be safe.
Good night, all. Good night.